So we'll call the meeting to order. The first item is approval of the agenda and we have a couple changes we need to make to the agenda for this evening. The first is we're going to eliminate number six, which is central office reports, and we're going to postpone those until our December 16th meeting. And then the second is that we need to, we have executive session warned for the annual superintendent performance review as an evaluation of a public official. We also need to add an executive session for contract negotiations. So is everyone okay with those changes to the agenda? Board members?
Tammy, one more proposed change if it's okay?
Sure.
Stan in the finance section of the meeting would like to talk about flex spending accounts with the board as it relates to our cafeteria plans.
Okay. I'll put that in. And that's good with board members? We're good with that additional? Good. Okay. So first thing, first order of business after that is that we need a motion to approve the minutes from November 18th. Would someone care to make that motion?
No moves.
Thank you. And Len will second. Thank you. Are there any changes to the corrections to the minutes? Anyone have anything? Notice anything? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from November 18th with any corrections, please give me a thumbs up. Okay. Anyone opposed? Please say no. Okay. Anyone abstaining? Okay. The minutes are approved. And then we're going to move on to public announcements. And I know that David has something that he would like to address in that section this evening before we get to public comment. So Dave, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, you bet, Tammy. Actually, two things I'd like to address if that is okay.
Correct. Yes.
First, would like to make the board and the public aware, we've just, within the last half hour, communicated with families at Clarendon Elementary and then subsequently with families throughout the school district. We had a positive COVID case connected to Clarendon Elementary. It won't surprise the board that there are privacy regulations that prohibit, you know, identification of whether that's a student staff member or whatever that may be. We have form letters that we're required to send out from the Department of Health. And I can specify for you that in this particular case, there are some individuals who are required to quarantine due to being close contacts. And we are placing the classroom that is involved in remote learning for roughly the next two weeks. That classroom will be prepared to return to in-person school if all goes well on Tuesday the 15th of December. So just wanted the board to be publicly aware of that. And anybody in the school community who's a parent or staff member should have received an email to that effect from me within just the past few minutes. So that's one topic. Second, I would like to address publicly, we had a circumstance come up at the high school in the last couple of days that caused some concern both internally and externally. And I'd like to address that with you right now. An email was sent to our student population from within the school. Most of you know that our students have email addresses that are millriverschools.org emails, the same way that our board members have email addresses that are rooted in the same. And occasionally, the school communicates with students about various things that they need to know. In this particular case, it involved a survey from an outside organization that was not approved to go out to students but ended up going out inadvertently. And I'd like to just talk through some of those details with you so that you're aware. So this particular survey request from this organization, the preface and the premise of it was not appropriate and it should not have been sent. This particular survey offered students a gift card for completing the survey, which is, in my opinion, extremely inappropriate. And it asked students to provide their personal address if, in order to receive that gift card. The email was sent out by the school in error. That sending had been paused by the administrators due to concerns about it, but unfortunately, it was already in an email queue and scheduled to be sent out. So we did not successfully cancel something that was already queued up. Historically, so that you're aware, emails sent from the administration to students have often been sent through a designate. From this point onward, I've had conversation with Mr. Wedeman and directed him that from here on out, any students sent directly to, I'm sorry, any emails sent directly to students will only come from the principal directly. And that's because I want the principal to have ultimate oversight over any message that is sent to students in that regard. With this particular outside organization, we do not have any intention to maintain connections or relationships with this organization moving forward. It's important that you know that the school did not, does not, and has not shared any personal information about students or staff with any outside parties. Again, this email was sent from school personnel to school student email addresses that are actually public emails, but was only sent internally through that mechanism. This was inadvertent and it occurred due to administrative oversight. But again, no student information was shared in any way with outside, outside parties. Mr. Wedeman issued an apology to students and parents related to this oversight and requested that students ignore the survey that they were requested to complete. And school personnel involved in this process being sent out have been addressed in accordance with our normal investigative and disciplinary protocols. And of course, as you know, anything like that related to personnel matters is not subject to public discussion. Those are dealt with internally in order to protect employee personnel rights. So just wanted to make sure that I discuss that with you upfront. I would encourage you as a board, if you would like to speak to someone and hold someone accountable for what occurred there, I am the superintendent and the folks that were engaged with this work under my supervision. So I would encourage you to hold me accountable for that concern if it is a concern that reaches that, that level with you. But I wanted to just take the time to address that in this venue. Thanks, Tammy.
Okay. Thank you. If anyone has any comments, any board members, I would ask that you direct them to Dave and we can do that at a later point during other business if that's appropriate. Otherwise, feel free to email him with any questions that you have. I don't want to have a discussion right now. We could do that later in the meeting so we can move on. I know we have some members of the public who are here to speak and I don't want to keep them waiting while we have a discussion. If that makes sense to everybody? Okay. So we'll move on to public input. I think we have a few people this evening, Dave, that want to speak.
Yeah, we do. We have four individuals, Tammy. In the following order, I believe all are with us by video. Firstly, Mr. Fillmore, Todd Fillmore, followed by Crystal Usher, followed by Art Peterson, and then Ken Fredette. So first up would be Todd Fillmore.
Okay. I think that everyone who spoke, or scheduled to speak has spoke with us before. You know the guidelines. Everyone can have three minutes this evening. And I will keep time. I will ask each of you to let me know when you're ready to begin. As usual, I'll let you know when you have about 30 seconds left and ask you to wrap up when that time is up so that we can move on to the next speaker. So, Mr. Fillmore, are you with us? Good evening.
I am. Thank you very much, Tammy. And first off, I want to extend a thank you to Mr. Younts for his explanation of the recent events. And that's actually what I wanted to talk a bit about tonight. In October, LGBT advocacy group Outright Vermont was selected to provide mandatory in-service training to all Mill River District staff and teachers on the subject of gender and sexuality. As many of you know, of course, by now, since Mr. Younts just announced it, the Mill River Administration sent out an email from Outright Vermont to Mill River students as young as 12, soliciting personal contact information for money. Essentially, they were trolling for teenagers. What many of you folks do not know is that a month ago, on November 3rd, Mr. Younts and the entire board were sent emails detailing concerns precisely about such a group having access to Mill River staff and students. When I pressed them for information on the influence that Outright Vermont might have on staff and students, Mr. Younts threw up a blockade and twice violated Mill River policy F-27 as well as federal law, and quite rudely refused to provide any further information. For those not familiar, Outright Vermont's website openly offers free sex supplies to kids as young as 13 and openly advocates the use of lube, sex toys, and anal sex among young teens. This information was provided to Mr. Younts and the board at that time. Despite that knowledge, Outright Vermont was still allowed access to the levers of power in Mill River. And only after the email was accidentally sent did Mr. Younts seem to show any concern about this group. I have yet to receive a reply from the board on this matter. This issue shows once again that there are some really skewed priorities in this board. As I've watched the board proceedings over the past several months, it seems that all of the oxygen is being sucked out of the room for flag issues primarily, and issues like this are just left to fall, fall on the floor. Nobody's paying attention to things that are really potentially damaging to our kids, this being a particular case in point. I find it really ironic that the school board at the last meeting actually dared to suggest that our kids were safer in school than they are at home. With these events in view, I have to question the validity of such a statement. I mean, by whose standards? Mr. Younts, I appreciate your efforts to explain, but I really do feel you owe the community and the board a full apology. This information was presented to you very early on and all I got from you was pushback. No effort to try to come to an understanding, no effort to try to help parents understand exactly what this group had in mind relative to our students and our staff.
30 seconds, Mr. Fillmore.
Thank you. I want to remind you folks that the board does not own the school. The superintendent does not own the school. The school is public property and that our kids attend your schools. Our kids attend your schools. We rely on you to make sure your priorities in order and that you are taking care of our kids as we deem proper. So I can't think of anything further to say. So I appreciate this opportunity. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Fillmore. Okay.
Tammy, next you have Crystal Usher, followed by Art Peterson and Ken Fredette.
Okay. Crystal, are you with us tonight?
I am by phone.
Oh, okay. Yes, yes, I can. I'm sorry, I was looking for a face. Sorry.
No, that's okay. I couldn't, I couldn't seem to join, so I'm not sure if I didn't have permission or what happened, but I called in, so that's fine.
Okay. I can start your timer now, okay? Is that, are you ready?
Okay.
Okay, great.
Yes, thank you. Crystal Usher, concerned parent and taxpayer. As I spoken and expressed last month and will continue to share are my concerns in hopes of seeking improvements within our school. These concerns begin with the lack of structure and education my children are receiving. I agree entirely with what was stated by another parent last month during public comment. Our children are falling behind, left to lean on each other and largely teaching themselves. As many school-born faculty members have agreed, it is in the best interest of all of us to have our children in the classroom. It was also observed and stated by faculty how seamlessly students have adapted back to in-person learning while following COVID protocols with minimal issues. Some noted how students appear to be thriving both emotionally and academically when in school. Clearly, there is much room for improvement in our current learning structure referred to as a hybrid plan, allowing room for only two in-person days. A response to my concern raised last month regarding the lack of in-person learning in the middle and high school was due to a physical building space. This baffles me as we are taking, are we taking advantage of use of the entire building? Is each classroom at both COVID-allowed capacity? Are the gymnasiums, cafeteria, and libraries, among other large areas, being utilized as temporary classrooms to accommodate more socially-distanced learners? I understand, I understand the district receive a large COVID grant. I assume and expect this will be used in a way to benefit our students' education, whether it be to make temporary or larger classrooms within the building or provide better remote technology and learning. Both have room for improvement. As a taxpayer and parent, I'd be interested in seeing where these funds will be allocated. In addition, we clearly have administration issues. For those not aware, a sexuality-based Outreach Vermont survey was sent via email by Mill River faculty late Monday evening to my daughters and, from what I understand, all Mill River and middle and high school students. Today, I read a response regarding a concerned parent from Mr. Younts saying that the intent was to pause sending this email. In my opinion, and I expect others would agree, there is no reason to pause as there would be no appropriate time to send such an email to children within a public school. I am confused as to why any thought, time, or consideration had been given to delivering such an email to students. An email that awards them a voluntary.
30 seconds, Crystal, sorry. Sorry.
Yep. For providing answers about their sexuality along with their home address. This email was also not sent to parents. I understand Outreach Vermont was the focus of a recent in-service faculty day. This is yet another example of our district not focusing or prioritizing our children's education and structure, both during and outside of this pandemic. I am sad for our children, our district, and our community. Mill River is a public school with a strong foundation that is currently failing our youth. Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. Thank you.
Yep.
Dave, who is next?
Excuse me. Next we have Art Peterson, followed by Ken Fredette.
Okay. I see you, Art. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. I will start the timer for you. Does that work?
Yeah. Just quickly to review where we're at here in the school district. In June, we had the flag issue come up. You folks authorized two flags to fly without adequate information. You've divided the community. We continue to fight that fight still. In August, the decision was made to be the only school in the area without in-person, in-person school, which upset folks, divided the community again. We didn't, we made the decision at the school to not allow parents to come to games or attend practices to have anything to do with their kids' activities at school, again causing Board members were found to make disparaging and racist comments about community members in the interim sometime in the fall. In November, you got ahold of Outright Vermont, had them do the training with your staff, and now they've done this. Okay? Now they've done this. This is a systematic level of failure by the leadership from the school board to the superintendent to principals. Something's got to change. Heads need to roll at some point. We can't just go on and just ignore all the things that are happening and say everything is beautiful, because that's what I hear when I listen to these board meetings. Everything is wonderful. Well, everything isn't wonderful. It isn't wonderful. You need to face facts. This board needs to face facts. And the facts are this community is divided. People are very upset. You'd be lucky not to be sued over this thing. You will be lucky not to be sued. Okay? Somebody needs to be fired. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Art.
Yep.
And then finally, we have Ken. Yes?
That's correct. Ken Fredette is your fourth speaker.
Okay. Hi, Ken, I see you there. Are you ready to start?
I am, Tammy. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening and thank you always, as always, for the opportunity to speak, Ken Fredette, Wallingford. I think you all are aware of my position on the flag issue. So I just want to call your attention to a piece on Vermont Digger today about the city of Berry. And they've, they've been wrestling with developing a policy, much the same as you have. And yesterday, they raised the Black Lives Matter flag for the month of December. That's going to be followed by, what I know, as I think most people know, is a Blue Lives Matter flag for the month of January. This is what they came up with after a couple back and forth, I guess. They're calling it in the article, "The Thin Blue Line Flag," for whatever reason. But I wanted a quote from one of the Berry City councilors caught my eye. It made me think of what's been happening here in the, in the Mill River District. As Councilor Teddy Wasazak supported the Black Lives Matter resolution, but then he voted against the plan to add the thin blue line. And he made this statement after the Black Lives Matter flag was raised. Again, this is on today's Digger. "The thin blue line is not about the Berry City Police Department. It's not about anything other than directly responding to this flag," referring to the Black Lives Matter, of course. Wasazak said he supported the notion of defending good police officers. It's not that, and this is a quote again, "It's not that that is an incorrect statement, but I think, much like All Lives Matter, it's a correct statement that misses the point of the conversation." And I will submit to all of you now that there will always be people who miss the point of the conversation or choose to deny it. So I implore you to keep fighting the good fight and all of you stay well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Dave, do we have anyone else?
No more public comment.
Okay. Thank you. I would ask anyone who's on from public comment to disconnect now and you can continue to watch the, the meeting via the live stream. Thank you very much for speaking to us tonight. We appreciate it. We will move on to principal updates. So I would suggest that we have, Maureen, why don't you go first?
I love it. Okay. Well, up at Timoth, 25% of the students are quarantining. They were pretty honest about, you know, having gatherings at Thanksgiving. So that's about 12 children. And so the teachers are teaching both remotely and in-person and working really, really hard and doing a really good job. Also, that the, the only really new thing that I can tell you is that the teachers got together and decided to do a homework club and tutoring club from 2:00 to 3:00 when the kids leave voluntarily three days a week to make sure that they could pull kids up from the at-home learning, the remote learning in the spring. And aside from that, the children are doing well and they're thriving and we're moving forward and things are going well.
Great. Thank you, Maureen. Dan, why don't you tell us what's going on in Wallingford?
Good evening, everybody. Hope everyone's well. Wallingford is great. We too had a small percentage of people who are self-quarantining due to holiday activities. We're under the 10% mark. We are a bigger school, though. But a couple of the highlights I'd like to point out, our reading intervention, one of our reading intervention teachers, Kathleen Harrington, wrote a grant this summer and she got approval for that just recently. So we were able to spend about $500 on some books to help support our students in reading. And she strategically chose books around character. So that's exciting. And the other thing I wanted to touch base on is kind of to piggyback on what Maureen had pointed out and also give a shout out and kudos to our teachers. For those students who, we appreciate being honest, going remote, it does cause another element to teaching. So our teachers are putting in some extra effort to support those students who are staying home. And so I want to give a shout out to our teachers for putting in those, those extra hours and then also point out that we appreciate that extra hour at the end of each day that was built into the schedule to support remote learners in situations as these. So it's, it's working out. I did want to say one more thing about our staff. Today, I had a staff member come to me in the middle of our leadership meeting when we had a break and just say that she could feel the buzz of positive energy walking down the hallways. And so that, you know, teachers are in their groove. They're refreshed, rejuvenated from a little break during Thanksgiving and hitting it full force. And I would, I would second that same as I was able to make it through all the classrooms this morning before we hopped into our leadership meeting. And so it's good to see some good teaching going on and some positive interactions. So loving it so far. And that's all I've got. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Dan. Jody, how are things up in Shrewsbury?
Snowy as usual. We are, we are doing great. Before leaving for Thanksgiving, our PTO, because this year we could not host the community Thanksgiving feast we normally would, provided a great surprise for students where every kid was sent home with a little pot and seeds to grow some herbs over Thanksgiving break leading into the December holidays so that they could grow their own, their own seasonings for December holiday dinners, which was a great connection to our sustainability work. And so just really appreciative of the PTO for consistently finding creative ways to still make kids feel excited this year. We are looking forward next week. We are having an artist-in-residency with Seon Kamara Drumming. Seon is a West Guinean drummer and will be doing a virtual Zoom artist-in-residency every single day next week with our students, teaching them some drumming, some dancing, and teaching about his culture. So that's going to be really exciting coming up. And just, you know, as my colleague said, just so proud of the staff that I work with and how hard they have been working to support kids both remotely and in-person. Just, you know, being constantly careful of following all of those COVID regulations at the same time they're meeting kids' social, emotional, and educational needs, just really feeling grateful for that and feeling grateful for the community coming back from Thanksgiving break. The entire community has been just so careful and thoughtful about following regulations.
Great. Thank you, Jody. Hi, Tyler, how are you?
Doing well. How are you?
Good.
Good. So, you know, it's interesting how our days can change by COVID regulations and what have you. And, you know, I'm always out and about during the change of class and it's always good to see smiling faces, albeit you have to look at the eyes now and not the, not the, not the mouth for that smile. But, you know, interestingly enough, the best part of my day that I've had recently is that morning drop-off of students. I'm out outside with our screeners every morning and, you know, to see that our students are glad to come in school and everyone gives me a good morning when I say good morning to them. It's, it really is a good part of the day and, you know, students are always revved up and ready to get going. You know, it's, our, our day is different a little, you know, obviously with everything is, but you, you wouldn't guess it. I mean, our students are really excitedly back and they're really getting to the swing of things. With that, you know, some things that we're already looking for normalcy, if you will, our National Honor Society are doing their food baskets this year, so that food is being collected at this point and ready to be distributed out to our families and our communities. And then also, you know, strangely enough, I was just talking with Ms. Macklemore yesterday about, you know, thinking about next year. We're already starting to look at building our schedule for next year and maybe, you know, whatever changes we need to make within the building for, you know, class time and what have you. And, you know, another thing that I'm hearing from our elementary principals that I really want to echo is our staff, you know, due to COVID issues and, you know, teachers out if, for whatever reasons, health, whatever reasons they're out. Our staff has really come together and really leaned on each other and really helped out and filled classes and made sure that our, our kids are getting what they need. So I've been really proud of our staff and really proud of our kids. And it's been, it's been really great being back in the building and being with our kids. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I know that Fred is not with us because he's dealing with the issues that David mentioned at Clarendon. So, yeah, I just wanted to make that, repeat that for anyone who's watching so they understand. So, thank you all. And we'll move on to committee business then. So, Len, personnel, you're first up.
Hi there. How we doing? The Personnel Committee met this evening. And what we have at this point to present to the board was a list from Kim Menere of Winter Coaching Staff and contracts, understanding that this all is very much in flux. But, and, and what the Personnel Committee, what Personnel Committee suggested is that I present and I will make a motion to approve the contracts as submitted by Kim Menere for winter sports.
Is there a second? Thank you, Liz. Okay. Any discussion on that? Anyone have any questions? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of approving that winter coaching list that Kim Menere had shared with the board earlier, please give me a thumbs up. Anyone opposed to it? Please say no. And anyone abstaining? Okay. There you go, Len.
Our next meeting will be January 6th at 6:00 PM when we'll be discussing administrative contracts.
Okay. Thank you. BJ, policy.
Okay. I'm muted. So we actually have two, we have two approvals to do today, so might as well just get to it. We have the approval of the flag policy, which is G17, which was our first reading last month, last meeting. George?
I would guess that you're asking for adoption?
Yes. So I'm making a motion to, is there, how was the wording?
You're moving.
Moving. To. Moving. I'd like to make a motion to approve the, uh, policy, G17, flagpole policy.
George? Second?
Amend the motion to adopt instead of approve.
Okay. I gotta stop reading the agenda then. Adopt.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, George. Discussion? Any discussion of that policy? Len?
Sorry. Again, I'm gonna speak to, I, I really have concerns about a policy that the school board adopts that, in my mind, sets up a situation where we can be legally liable for issues down the road. If you read that policy, the bottom line is, even if it goes, if, if a request goes through everything, it comes and is approved, it comes to the board. And the board makes the final decision as to whether that flag can fly or not. And I really have an issue. And again, this is not about any specific flag. It's about flags in general. And again, I will repeat, two flags should be flown on a flagpole. And if students want to express their freedom to speak, then it needs to be inside the school where it can be seen on a daily basis, on a regular basis, and encourages conversation around those things. And I'm sorry, I don't believe that a flag on the pole will have that impact. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Len. Any other discussion? Anyone else? George?
Unfortunately or unfortunately, I agree with Len's sentiments.
That's it? Just making sure. Okay. Just making sure. Okay. BJ?
I'm gonna say I half agree, um, because while I can't think of a situation right now where I might approve some of the ones, some of the flags that have come through, I'd probably encourage some other ways. I like the fact that we have an opportunity that this, that this policy does provide an option for it. So, and like I said, so that's where I think it's good to have the policy and in here. And we can just be very picky about what gets put up there. And it's here in case something comes through that we do want. And I, you know, something I think about, a situation that I might actually approve it. So that's my point at that one.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else want to speak before we vote? Okay. So I would suggest that we do a roll call vote because I bet you that's what George is gonna say. I see him looking like he's ready to make that. So we'll do a roll call vote. We'll do it alphabetically, the best that I can do. If we're not exactly alphabetical, I apologize. So Doug, did you have something to say?
No, I'll wait for the vote.
Okay. So, um, we'll go alphabetically. So Adrian, you're first.
I was expecting Raymond and I wasn't unmuted.
Sorry.
I'm voting yes.
Thank you. Amy?
Thank you, Tammy. I vote yes.
Thank you. Andy? Yes. Andy's voting yes. I see a thumbs up. BJ?
Yes.
Okay. Doug?
No.
George?
Abstain.
Okay. John?
John? Yes.
Oh, okay. Oh, there you are. I was like, I thought you were over there. Sorry. Len?
No.
Liz?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So I believe that we have two noes and one abstention. So the policy would be adopted by the board. And that's right, correct? Dave, BJ, yes? Okay. Just making sure. Double checking.
And Tammy, if I can just interject momentarily, tomorrow I will begin the process of reviewing the requests that we have against the now-approved policy and we'll keep the board apprised as to how those are coming along as I contact the requesters with the outcomes of those reviews.
Thank you, Dave, for undertaking that. We appreciate it. And then I'll turn it back over to you, BJ.
Can I try and add something?
Yes.
I just want to remind the public and, you know, somebody tell me if I'm wrong about this, but I want to remind the republic that, you know, we, we do represent you. And so if there's someone whose flag request gets denied, you want help with your flag request? I am personally happy to help anyone who wants to author a flag request. So I just, I want to put that out there.
Thank you, Liz. So BJ, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay. Um, so moving on, I'm gonna make a motion to rescind policy F12, which is, was a temporary policy that was a first reading last week.
Okay. Uh, is there a second to that motion to rescind? Thank you, Adrian. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. Um, all those in favor, and this I believe we could do by a thumbs up. All those in favor of rescinding? Okay. Anyone opposed? Please say no. And anyone abstaining? Okay. There you are, BJ.
Okay. And we do have another policies meeting scheduled for the first Tuesday of the month at, I think we tried to move it to 5:30. So.
Okay. So that's January 5th at 5:30. Okay. Adrian, negotiations?
We're in the process of, of continuing to meet with the, the support staff. And that's really the only update I have. I'm hoping that we can have a further discussion of, of how things are moving along in executive circles.
Yeah. Thank you. John, Buildings and Grounds?
Yeah. So we met last night. And Gary gave us an update on the part of the grant money that was given to us for air, indoor air quality improvements. The district received just over $350,000 for those improvements. Each of the schools got some specialized equipment in what they're calling the isolation areas. Have a filter for nurses' offices and a filter change on the HVAC equipment. Some additional monies went to other, went to individual schools. CES got a fair amount, but it allowed us to replace eight of the unit ventilators that we've identified as being problems. We replaced several of them under the, um, performance contract bond. This allowed us to replace eight of them. Last night's meeting, we thought that was the remaining, the total of the remaining ones. But Gary sent out an update by email today that said that, um, that was not all of them, but it was most of them. So anybody who's gonna be at the next Buildings and Grounds meeting helped me remember to amend the minutes for that. And then, and those, um, units are gonna be replaced. There were, should have been two, uh, work on today, two tomorrow, two Friday and two Saturday. And then that will finish off that work. Mill River, um, was, got some extra money to replace an air handler in the large chorus room that was leaking some water into the school. Apparently there were hoses coming from that into a drain to keep the water from actually going into the chorus room. So that sounds like a really good idea. That work has already been done. Tinmouth, um, was, is installing a, an air handler to provide fresh air into the classrooms. Something that hasn't been, um, has not been there. And, um, there, it's a heat exchanger. So it takes the heat that's from the air that's being drawn out of the building and heats up the air that's coming in. And there's also an additional heat coil in that to help heat up that air. So it shouldn't cool the building down while we're bringing in fresh air. Wallingford and Shrewsbury were actually in really good shape as far as indoor air quality. So, um, they got enough to cover those three items that all the schools got. Everything is on schedule to be completed by December 31st, which is the deadline for the, uh, grant money to be spent. Efficiency Vermont has actually selected Ironman Elementary for a before and after data collection study, and they'll be publishing results from that, uh, at some point after, some point in the future. Be interesting to see how that turns out. There are a few other air, uh, HVAC items in the schools that still need to be addressed, but none of them are critical. There are parts of the systems that, um, we're already working around and we're able to deal with, um, other ways. So everything has been going really well. I did ask Gary to just tell us how COVID testing on the buses was going. And he said there have been very few issues. Occasionally a kid has been, asked to not board the bus, but it's been fairly rare. There was one instance where a student got on the bus and ended up having to be sent home later that same day. But that was, uh, that's the only incident that he was aware of where that happened. Still struggling with staffing for transportation and for the custodial staff, but, um, not losing any ground, not really gaining much either. So again, anybody out there looking for some work to do and wanna learn how to drive a bus, um, I think there's some opportunities there if you're interested. He did also share that because of some of the things that we're trying to do with bringing in fresh air, that our fuel costs will not be what we were hoping them to be. They're gonna be a little higher because we're having to keep some of the areas warmer and we're bringing in colder, fresh air. So that's creating some issues, uh, where the, even in the colder morning temperatures that we've had, which hasn't been all that cold, the oil boiler has actually had to fire up to provide some supplemental heat. So, uh, we're managing it as best we can. The recommendations from Secretary of Education and Department of Health do allow for sort of throttling back on that outside air coming in as the temperatures get colder. But it's gonna be a balancing act between trying to maintain fairly good air exchanges and keeping the buildings heated. But I have every confidence that Gary and his staff can handle that. Our next meeting is going to be January 5th, uh, scheduled for 6:00 o'clock. So, um, we'll see folks there.
Great. Thank you, John. Any questions for John? Okay. Great. Maria, community engagement?
Hi. So we had a meeting this week. I apologize for all the delays with meetings in the, over the past month or two. That's, um, been complicated, but, but we did manage to meet and we mostly talked about our plan to have some informal get-togethers with, on, virtual, not live, with community members. And we have dates for them and we have times. We're going to do a couple in January and a couple in February. Eventually we'd like it to be once a month. But, um, considering that the budget is gonna be voted on soon, we thought that, and we, and because we weren't sure what time would work for people. So we chose in a morning time and an evening time. We've got two in January, two in February. And then after that, we'll reassess and see, um, what works best, what more people are able to come to. So I'm gonna tell you when the dates and times are. And I'm not gonna make people sign up at this exact moment unless somebody thinks I should. But I'll tell you what the times and dates are first. They will be Saturday, January 9th at 9:30 in the morning. Coffee hour. The 25th of January will be a Thursday. No, that's not true. Will be a Monday, Monday, the 25th of January at 6:30. Saturday, the 6th of February at 9:30. And Monday, the 22nd of February at 6:30 PM. So the 6:30s are in the evening, the 9:30s are in the morning. And hopefully those will all provide a time that's, that people could come and talk to three or four board members. Ideally, we would have a member of the finance committee at every single one of those meetings because we anticipate that people are gonna be curious about what the new budget looks like and what we're going to be paying for this year. And maybe what, I mean, it sounds like we already had a question during public comment about what COVID funds are actually paying for in the schools. In part, building, um, upgrades to our physical plant, but in other ways too. So, um, that would be a useful thing to be talking about as well. It's going to be informal. It's not going to be, it's not board action or representative of a board position, but it's to answer questions and correct maybe misinformation that, that exists about, about issues. So if, if people would like to sign up for times now, that would be great. If you don't, if you don't feel like you're ready for that, um, I'm gonna say, I will, could you get back to me? I will send an email to everybody to let, to remind you when those dates are. And if you can get back to me within a week, otherwise I will start hounding you.
Maria, I'll do January 9th at 9:30 AM. That's Lenny.
Ah, gotcha. Thank you very much. Anybody else want to grab a slot? We're, you're probably gonna do a cup, it's quite possible you'll do a couple. Adrian, when would you like to go?
I was actually gonna say, do we want people to try and sign up for more than one?
Yes.
I, I can very happily take the February 6th and, um, the 1/25.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else want to leap on it? Liz?
Um, Saturday mornings are typically good for me and I love coffee.
Yay. You can have coffee at the evening ones too. It's just not good for all of us.
I do.
So would you like both Saturday mornings, Liz?
Yes, please.
Okay. Thank you.
BJ, I saw you.
I was just gonna say, I sent you an email, Maria. I'm good for one of the Mondays, one or two.
Okay. And you, BJ? John?
I'll round out the 9th.
All right.
I could round out the 25th then, Maria.
Thank you, Tammy. All right. Um, I don't want to spend too much more of our meeting on this, so I will be in touch with everybody. Thank you so much for this. And we will send out invitations, or an announcement about this, probably right at the beginning of January to let people know what to expect and remind them what time it's gonna be. And we will have limited numbers for these because we do want to have it be a group small enough that we can have a manageable conversation. And if, and we think within four of them, everybody who's interested should have an opportunity to come. And our next meeting is on January 12th at 6:30 PM.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Maria. Okay. And then now Liz, we'll move on to you with finance. And I know that at some point during your presentation, Stan needs to, um, discuss flex spending accounts with us. So.
Okay. So I will present pay orders and pay, um, payroll. And then after that, Stan can maybe jump in and then I can, um, talk a little bit about the budget.
That sounds good.
Okay, super. So, good evening, everyone. This evening, I have the following payroll warrants dated November 20th in the amount of $582,457.57 dated December 1st. I also have payroll in the amount of $4,745.17 for a total of $587,202.74. And before I forget, I want to thank George. George, thank you for your email that George had looked at all of the back documents, which I had not have, have not had the chance to do. So thank you, George. This evening, we have the following pay warrants from the general fund in the amount of Also from the general fund, $4,000. Also from the general fund, $4,885.88 from the lunch program, $2,946.14 and from after school program, $749.52 for a total of And I would move that we accept the payroll and pay warrants as presented.
Second, Liz. Thank you, George. Discussion? George, Doug, anybody? Nobody? Everything look okay?
Yes.
Everything on my side. There is one thing that kind of sticking in my craw a little bit. There's a payment to an individual somewhere around $600 mark. What that is, is some of our legal expenses that we've been having. Right now, we have used approximately half of what we had budgeted for legal and generally over the years that I've been a board member, that's one thing that actually gets out for a surplus down the road. I suggest we maybe do a little slowing down here, see if we can protect ourselves a little bit differently that way. Other than that, everything was fine.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the pay orders and payroll as read, please give me a thumbs up. Anyone opposed, please say no. And anyone abstaining. Okay, thank you, Liz. So Stan, did you want to talk to us now about the flex spending accounts?
I sure can. In discussion with our open enrollment with our 30-minute flex account was brought up as to whether or not we would like to offer that for the upcoming year. The reason why we're trying to get this in now or tonight is that we only have a, you know, a month to get this set up for January 1st. If you aren't familiar with the flexible spending account, what that is, is an employee makes a predetermined election of an amount that they want withheld from their paycheck, which is pre-tax to pay for expenses that might not be covered by the HRA or medical expenses that aren't covered by insurance. I'm requesting that we, you know, would offer our staff a flexible spending account for health expenses and also for dependent care expenses. There is no employer contributions for these accounts. It is strictly an employee contribution into these accounts. The negative on the employer side is that there would be an administrative fee attached to these accounts. And that fee is $3.70 a month per account. Depending on the amount of money that gets on average that gets put into these flexible accounts by our employees, there could be no cost effect to the employer, or there may even be a savings depending upon the amount of money that's put in for the year. And how that works is, for example, the $3.70 per account for 12 months is, would cost the employer $44.40. But since the contributions into the account by the employee is pre-tax, there would be a 7.65% savings on that money for the employer for not having to pay social security taxes on that, on those funds. So if on average, you know, excuse me, on average, if the average account for those flexible spending accounts were $580, that would be our break even point for having a break, no, no, no cost effect to the district. The other negative in regards to the flex health flex account is that the money starts paying for expenses right away, whether or not there is funds in that person's account to cover those expenses. The employer fronts that money to pay those expenses, let's say at the beginning of the year. And if the employee were to leave employment before they had the money in the account to cover those expenses, the employer eats, would eat that money that was owed to them. On the other side, if the employee had money in their account that they did not spend and left, the employer gets to keep that money. The employee does not get to take that money with them. And that concept is also where the employee also has to spend that money by the end of the year. If they do not spend it, they, they lose it and it goes to the employer. The dependent care, the account does not have any negative effect for the employer that, that those expenses have to be paid with money actually in the employee's account. So there is no liability for the employer on that side. If we were to set, to go ahead, I would need a motion from the board to add the health flexible spending account and the dependent care flex account to our cafeteria plan or our section 125 plan. This would then allow us to withhold those money from the paychecks, non-taxable to the employee. We would also have to set a, a minimum amount for an account and also a maximum amount of account. For the flex, for the health flex account, the maximum amount that can be put into it in any one year is $2,700. But since this is our first year of doing this and to try to limit any, our liability to any accounts that where the employee may leave, you know, my recommendation would be to have a maximum contribution amount of $1,250 and a minimum contribution amount of $300. The reason why I'm using the $300 is on the single support staff health plan with the state, their out-of-pocket exposure would be $300 on their, on their health plan. So at a minimum, if they wanted to cover their full deductible of $2,500, the HRA would cover $2,200. The flex plan would cover $300. On the dependent care where again, there's no liability to the employer, the maximum can be $5,000. You know, I would recommend you know, doing the max of 5,000, but also doing a minimum of 600 because with the minimum of 600, that would, would meet our break even point and there would be no, you know, net effect or net cost from the administrative fees to the employer. I guess, does anybody have any questions in regards to this? Adrian?
I'll form it in my head and then I couldn't remember what it was. What was the, the reason that we would only do the $300 for the health account as opposed to the $600 that would, that would cover the, the cost of of the administrative fee?
The only reason or logic that I was using as a suggestion was based on the single plan for health insurance on the gold CDHP, the out-of-pocket exposure for a single person for sports staff is $300. And for, for teachers and licensed staff is $400. So I was, I was using that as a, as a minimum guide, but we could, you can go, we could go higher because obviously they can use that money for health expenses not covered by the health insurance plan, like eyeglasses, dental care.
I guess I would, yeah, I, I support the idea of doing that the first year for the reasons that you stated, but I am wondering whether in future years, if it's well utilized that we don't raise that minimum to, to cover full administrative costs. Oh, that's it.
Okay. Anyone else have questions? Okay, would someone care to make the motion? Adrian, Liz would you second that? So that would be the motion, as Stan said, to add a health flex spending plan with a minimum contribution of $300 and a maximum contribution of $1,250 and a dependent care plan with, was there a minimum on that? Stan, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, the minimum would be 600.
And the maximum is 5,000?
Yep.
So if there's no other discussion on that, all those in favor of approving that, please give me a thumbs up. Anyone who's opposed, please say no. Anyone who's abstaining? Okay, there you go, Stan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Liz, we'll turn back to you for a budget overview.
Thank you, Tammy. Um, let me get my notes here. So in light of the pandemic and the education fund deficit, the finance committee agreed that the fiscal year 22 budget should be level funded. That said, as the draft budget stands today, we are level funded for FY22, and we achieved that by using surplus funds, omitting continuing education for administrators and summer curricular work for staff, by moving professional development training in-house, by tightening all supplies and departmental budgets and periodicals budgets district-wide, and by restructuring some of the coaching positions in our athletics programs. In spite of this, we hope to hire and plan to hire a part-time pre-cape coordinator for the district, two, two guidance counselors and an arts coordinator. And as we are now in receipt of the tax commissioners fiscal year 22 education yield letter, which is a rough calculation and forecast of the property dollar equivalent yield, income dollar equivalent yield and the non-homesbed tax rate, we can continue our discussions with the foresight of these figures. And I actually failed to say previously that, that the next meeting of the finance committee is Monday, January 4th, 2021 at 4:30. And that's all I've got. Kim, you're muted.
And that's usually why I don't mute myself because then I forget to unmute myself. So, thank you, Liz. So we will move on to transact other legal business or also known as George's favorite part of the program. So George, yes?
Good evening. It was a pleasure to see everybody this evening. I hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving. I know that we did. I just have a brief announcement, I guess. I suspect that most of my fellow board members have noticed that I have not been in attendance to too many committee meetings. And many circumstances have been interfering with my attendance. I suspect that some of them will continue, but I will try to improve my record. So I do apologize for the inconvenience to the rest of you. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Adrian? You're muted.
Sorry, this is a report that George would normally make. I just wanted to quickly say that Stafford, I'm the Stafford rep now. I inherited that from George. And I wanted to tell everyone that, that Dave happens to be the, the finance chair at Stafford and he ushered in a level funded budget that was voted on last finance meeting, I think, and still needs to get voted on by the Rutland City School Board. But they've made real efforts similar to ours where they've, they've controlled their spending and they are still changing programs to be more responsive to the community. And I, I just have to tell everyone how impressed I am by the, by the Stafford administration and the programming they have and how pleased I am that we're associated with them and that they managed to level fund the budget. So that should help us. That's it.
Excellent. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, we move on to agenda building. We have to discuss our next meeting on December 16th at 6 o'clock. We're supposed to have a professional development session for the board and Dave is going to let us know if there's anything in particular that we should be talking about. He has his hand raised. I was going to ask for suggestions, but I think he has a couple. There you go.
Yeah, I, I have a proposal and the board could either redirect this or say you'd like it another time, but I think it might be timely to have maybe Tyler and Jen and a couple Mill River teachers, possibly a high school and a middle school teacher, just share with the board a week in the life of a Mill River teacher in the hybrid environment that we're in. You know, there is some misunderstanding or, or just it, it's all strange to how this lot works. So I think it might be helpful to just give some folks a chance to talk to you about what their lives look like at this point in time, if you're interested. We could do that during a regular meeting. We could do that during this PD time, which is set aside. We could do it after New Year's at the, at the pleasure of the board.
Okay, folks, what's saying?
Just, and I, I like that idea. We may want to plug in personnel at like 6. David, I'm asking you, can we do personnel 6, 6:30 if we need it? And then is a half an hour enough for them or, or do you think the full hours? Because I don't want to push the, push the personnel committee, but.
Yeah, Len, I, my, my quick hunch, you know, I, I think we might have a couple contracts to look at for personnel. I bet we could do 15, 20 minutes for that and 40 minutes of PD would probably be more than enough, just quick reaction.
Okay, so if, if we set up a personnel committee at 6, boom, that's done and then we move right into that.
Okay, that works. Does that sound good to everyone? Okay.
And I want to, I want to acknowledge BJ Barron. He and I had a side conversation where he proposed that idea. So credit goes to BJ on that one. And, and his fancy hat, by the way. I thought it looked better with a beard.
There you go. And so then our agenda for the regular meeting on the 16th. We will have our central office reports then, Dave. And what else do we need to?
I think there's a first reading that will have the Title IX.
Oh, right. Okay. Anything else that I'm not thinking of? Okay, George? You're muted.
Sorry about that. If we're going to have an executive session, I need to have somebody send me an invitation or I'll still be on the beach.
Okay, yeah, Dave, maybe you can send us out, resend that link if you didn't already to.
Yes, I will. I'll prep that momentarily and send it to the board. You bet.
Okay, so while Dave's doing that, if there's no other items for the agenda, we do need to have actually three separate motions for executive session because the contract negotiations reason for going into executive session requires that we have a premature finding that discussing our contract negotiations with our staff in public would put the board in disadvantage. Would someone care to make that motion? Adrian, thank you. George would the board second it?
Yep.
So if there's any discussion on that motion, hearing none, all those in favor of that finding, please give me a thumbs up. And then I need someone, anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. I need someone to make the second part of that motion is to enter us into executive session for the purpose of contract negotiations. Adrian will make the motion. Liz will second it. Thank you. All those in favor of going into executive session for that reason, give me a thumbs up. Thank you very much. And then we also need to go into an exec, we need a motion to go into executive session for the annual superintendent performance review with the board, which would be an evaluation of a public official. So if someone would kindly make that motion. Liz, thank you. Adrian seconding, thanking, thank you. All those in favor of entering into executive session for that purpose also, please give me a thumbs up. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Perfect. Dave, have you sent us all links?
Yes, I have sent links and George, I sent you an extra version just to make sure we catch it on the flip side.
Okay, so I, we will therefore, and I don't believe that we have for the public that's watching, it's my understanding that as a result of these two reasons for example,
it's my understanding that as a result of these two reasons for executive session, we won't have any action being taken outs when we come back or leave executive session. So we can end our public meeting at that point, at this point.